All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our work session to order. It is now five thirty-four. Can I have an adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, our first item on the agenda is two point zero one, which is our student representatives to the Board of Education, and that is you. So we have all of our members here. We're gonna ask if you all, let's do a mic, and let's just pass it, if that's okay with the board, for them to introduce themselves. If you would state your name, state your school, and then what grade you're in. And then, obviously, for the board, those that are sitting at a table, those are gonna be our reps. And then the ones behind them, if you would please introduce yourself to, those are our rep alternates, okay? You can go ahead and start, Addison.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Addison Dinamore. I'm a junior at Lee Summit High School.
Hello, my name's Anaya Dandy, and I'm a senior at Summit Ridge Academy.
My name is Nora Mason, and I'm a junior at Lee Summit North.
Hi, I'm Ellie Johnson, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit West.
Hello, everybody. I am Lucas Gillette, a senior at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Aleah Hamilton, and I'm a junior at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Chloe Atkins, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit West.
Hi, I'm Haley Pickman, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit North.
Hi, my name is Elisa Noor, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit West.
Hi, my name's Jaylen Campbell, and I'm a junior at Lee Summit North.
Hello, my name is Garen Simpkins. I am a junior over at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, my name is Logan Henry, and I'm a junior at Lee Summit West.
Hi, my name is Emmy Harmon, and I'm also a junior at Lee Summit West.
Hi, I'm Jackie Sigmeyer, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit North.
Hello, my name is Katie Brunz, and I'm a junior at Lee Summit North.
Good evening, my name is Audrey Felker, and I'm a senior at Lee Summit High School.
Okay, so we want to give you a hand and thank you. So, Board, this is an opportunity. This is our first time as a full board to be able to meet our student reps. And so, a little bit of a thought is to, number one, discuss exactly what is it that we want from them on next Thursday. Not next Thursday, the third Thursday of the month, of this month. I will say that Vice President Foley presented a great idea. We're gonna open it up to the full board and kinda just let you all weigh in. We have the two World Cafes. They're gonna kinda get to see some of that discussion today from us as that being our next item. Allowing them to tackle those same three questions from the first World Cafe, and then being able to present that back to us from their peers. That is always an option. Also, being able to share their experience from the interviewing process to the application, just kinda tell us, give us some feedback, raw feedback from them, to see if there's some changes or things that we need to make as a board to make that a more streamlined process for them. I will tell you, we have already done the Board of Education one-on-one. All of the students have already participated. It is the same, as I stated, it was the same presentation that I did with the Parents Academy. Vice President Foley also joined me on one of those nights. And it was simply just a cover, what is the role of the Board of Education. I also talked about some fun facts about the district that Dr. Buck, that we have seen in his presentation that he has given to other different entities of arms of the district. What I did ask them to do was to provide homework. And so, give me two things that was affirmed, two things that they learned from the one-on-one, and then also, two things that they're still kinda wondering about. My hopes was, I had it all typed up and did not send it to my email. So I don't have that for you, so that you all could have that and be able to, but I will get that to you all tomorrow. And so that is some things that, as a board, we probably wanna make sure that we're addressing at some point in the near future, so that we can get those answers back to them. So other than that, I'm gonna open it up to the board, and let's allow them to talk to us, weigh in, or whatever you all would like to do at this time.
Well, that is kinda, they can answer too, right?
Yes, oh absolutely.
Can we make sure that they have a mic available, so that they can pass it around? Because I think we'll have questions for them on proceeding through the next couple of months that I think...
The point is they figure out what they, what they want to do as well. Absolutely. And that is, as I have said, and even the interviewing team, is that this is new for us, right? And so, we don't have, there was a lot of questions that you all had, even during the interviewing process, and even through the Board one-on-one. We're learning with you. But ultimately, one of the things that we've said was, we want you all to be in the driver's seat. And so, this is your opportunity to be able to have a relationship with the Board of Education. And so, this is not the opportunity to not talk. This is your time to talk, tell us what you wanna hear, and answer any questions. And so, it's open to the full board, or if there's some things that you directly wanna ask the board, this is a great time for you all to be able to do that today.
Sorry. Well, hey, I'll lead it off, just because I am curious about a couple of things here. Number one, from not only if we use the World Cafe questions, which I think would be good, because that keeps some consistency with what we ask the community as well, right? To see kind of what the feelings might be. Is two weeks an acceptable amount of time for them to be able?
This month, it's three weeks. February twenty-second is our board meeting.
So that would, we could get enough feedback in three weeks, right? Everybody feel like you can get enough feedback from your buildings, right? My second question, though, to, I guess, the student reps is just gonna be, what is the most efficient form for them to report back to us on these questions? We had somebody who was nice enough to do the artistic form for us, right? So, what do they wanna do in terms of sending it back to us? What's the best way to send data back to us? For a meaningful discussion, how about that? Because we gotta be able to talk about it, right? So, I guess ultimately, I'm asking all of you to get information to us prior to the board meeting, so we can actually have a discussion about it at the board meeting. It doesn't do us any good to all show up on that night, right, and be trying to read through it. Think about it in those terms.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm alone, but I think I'm, what specific questions would you guys wanna know?
So we had, are you familiar with the World Cafe events, where we had community members come in? And if not, that's totally fine. Are you familiar with those?
Is that what ends normally the sessions?
No, those are some of the public comments and stuff that we end up having. But what we did twice now, back in the fall, and then, I guess technically in the winter, is we went and we asked our community just a couple of really broad questions about the district. So, in the very first one, we asked, what's going well in LSR seven was question one. And people could give any answer under the sun, right? What's going well within the district? But we also know, obviously, people have a ton of concerns going in the district. And I would assume that that's the same in buildings as well, right? So the second question then we asked people was, what are you wrestling with in LSR seven? You know, what are some of the big items that need to be addressed, right? So what are you wrestling with? And then, the third question we asked was, is how can the board support those things? And so I think those, that's where we'd kinda like to lean, lean on you all, right? Is ask those same questions, because it gives some of that continuity of answers to see, you know, what kind of consistency is there between the community and actually within our buildings? So those are the three questions.
Right. So what would you need from the Board of Education, so that you all can go do that? With your peers?
I definitely think that in three weeks, that would be very possible for all of us.
What would you need from us?
Hey, pass it around if you have, I mean, this is, this is the best time. We don't, I mean, there might be somebody watching online, but it's gonna be few and far between right now, I bet, so...
I think that a, something written out, those questions to, I think we need those questions to be written out, whether it be through a Google Doc or a Google Form. I think it would be way better if it was in a Google Form, in a way that we had the questions, we would collect our data, and then we could answer it within the Google Form. I think that would make it a lot more organized and easier to process.
So, Dr. Buck, from a process standpoint, is that something that we can be able to arm them with, to be able to get them out to their peers? And then for them to be able to have time to bring, to talk and discuss amongst as a group? Yes, Ms. Bergen and I can probably work on helping coordinate that with them. We can get together in the morning and try to give something to you guys. Is there any other ideas around that from the students? Talk now, forever hold your peace.
I was gonna say Google Form as well, because for me, I don't really go to school full-time, so it would be difficult for me to interact with students. So I feel like a Google Form would be better for all the students, and then maybe have like, a due day of when it needs to be turned in from all the students, so we can get the information.
Do you all like those questions?
I think that's, that's the number, that's probably the biggest hurdle right now, right? What is, what is the biggest question that we wanna ask within the building? Slash, what question would they want to ask their peers? Outside of everything else, what is the number one question that you would wanna ask your peers about the district? I mean, keep it to understanding that we're trying to, as a governance team, right, in terms of the district? What is the number one question you could ask your peers in the building? Is it, I mean, it could be as basic as, what's the best thing going on in the building, and what's the worst? I mean, it could be that basic, too, if we really wanted.
I heard it's lunch. Lunch is the best thing that's...
My big thing about this Google Form for Dr. Buck is, would this be something that is just given out and posted on Schoology by the main offices? Or would we have to distribute this to other classes?
I think it's a great question. Do you wanna weigh in on what you think there? Because we could also look at Qualtrics as well, if you wanted to do it that way.
The students can chime in here, but I would think that it might be more meaningful for you to post it in your channels, for you to get with your newspaper broadcasting, for you to tap into the channels that you know are effective at reaching students in your schools. Just, the administration's very capable of accessing you through Schoology. I think the question for you is, what would be more effective in reaching your peers?
And Ms. Bergen's not saying you would have to create the form. If you agree with these questions, we can create it for you. But do you wanna share the link out yourselves? Do you want us to send it to every email address in the building? How would you like to do that?
Yes, I actually completely agree with Ms. Bergen. Not to come at our, one of our admins, Mr. Deasy at West, but he sends out a lot of different polls and things like that, and I don't know that the student, like, students actually filling that out doesn't happen a lot. And I think we'd get more honest responses if it was coming from us as a student.
I'm sorry, can I follow up real quick while you guys are passing the mic? So when I first heard the conversation about Google Form, I kinda envisioned it a little bit differently than I think I hear it being described right now. So, what I pictured was that a form would go to all of you students, and you were the only students that would fill it in after getting verbal feedback from your peers. But now it kinda sounds like you're gonna be thinking about sharing the link, so that just every, all of your peers can just go to this document and put in their information directly. So if that was the case, then I would give a little pushback, and I would ask, how are you, as a representative of your school, going to take that data and compile it together, so that we can have this conversation with the board?
Well, I know with Google Forms, it's really easy to transfer that into like pie charts on Google Sheets and stuff. So, I know that in the, like, Board one-on-one things, President Sparks was talking about how one of us would be kind of like the main channel of communication. So like, to kind of streamline the information and make sure that the right person is getting the right things. So I think that that would be an important thing to establish, so that once we do have this information, we can like, give it to that one person amongst us, to then give it to you guys.
Okay, this might be a very biased answer. I do like the Google Form idea, like you said, like the one Google Form, so you're not having to sort through all these multiple Google Forms. But this might be biased, because I'm a newspaper editor, but I think it'd be easier for us to go around, like, and treat it like a newspaper article that I'm writing in school. I go around, I interview four teachers, four students. I transcribe those notes, and then I take the biggest quotes, or like the biggest pieces, and take aways from that. And I basically write my own article or paragraph on what I see is the most common thing. So that way, we're not having so many people having to go and sort through all these different answers, because I know that could get a lot and kinda mixed feedback. So, I think we should treat it like a newspaper interview.
Yeah, I kinda do agree with Addison on this, because of the fact that when we do have a good conglomerate of students that fill this out, we do get to hear from each individual. But we kinda wanna hone in on the big issues. And so if we are hearing all of this, all of these issues, and we're able to sort through it, I do feel like if we're the ones that are filling it out, we can get the big issues and focus in on the hotspots, instead of having to sort through everything.
I agree. When I met, when I said Google Form, I meant that the Google Form would go out to all the representatives, and then we would collect data one-on-one, because I also agree, I think it's more honest if we directly interact with our peers. And then, I said the Google Form, because it was easier to keep track of all the questions, and that way we could submit our responses by what was the most common, or what were the most common issues that were present.
I think it's also important that, as a collective body, we're able to get together to discuss what we'd like to bring to you before we do give our presentation, since we do all go to different schools. And while I see Chloe and Elisa in the hallways, I don't necessarily see the students from SR at Lee Summit North and Lee Summit High School. So having a space to collect those bigger ideas that are all throughout the high schools, I think would be a great, great measure to take.
So when we talk about having a collective space for you all to be able to strategize and talk, and even for the alternates, that is an opportunity for them to also participate, and to be able to have that voice and that farther reach, because obviously, it would, I would think would be hard for one person to be able to reach the entire school, right? And so, being able to have multiple individuals. So what does that look like? How often are you all wanting to meet? Are y'all wanting us to be able to provide some type of platform via Google Meeting, Google Meets, to be able to discuss? Or y'all wanting to come in person? What would that look like, and what would we need to do to accommodate you all to meet?
I think the best thing would probably be meeting in person. I kinda just always think that, because I think phone and video calls are kinda hard for people to really get out their feelings. But, kinda from like a side note, from like a leadership position, like perspective, I think the way that we can really like build each other up as like a team is obviously being in person, so that way we get to know each other, know each other's personalities. Because I know if, let's say in ROTC, I'm on a new staff board, I'm not gonna wanna share my new opinions and ideas with people I don't know, because I'm scared of being judged. So I think it'd be easier if we do meet in person at least once before each meeting, and then maybe some online. But I think that's the best way for us to all grow as a team.
I feel like being in person would be more beneficial than meeting on a Google Meet. And I'm not sure what everybody else is thinking, but we could either do like, meet like once a week, or we could do like every other week and meet like, the week before we have a board meeting to discuss everything.
I agree with what she said, because like, for me, I'm not really the type of person to be outspoken on my opinion if I'm not asked a question. So I feel like it would be better if we meet in person, so we can just see like everyone's point of view on like, what information they've collected from the students. And also, I like the idea of the, doing the, like, survey as like a news thing, but also, how would we pick the students? Because you can have ten students, but they might have the same answer, so you won't really have a diverse answer if you choose only like four students. Because if two of those students say the same thing, then it's not really gonna voice the whole school, if that makes sense.
Yeah, kinda following up on that point. I know for me personally, for things like this, whenever I was going around in my own school, I go to each of my classes, and when we have these good things, discussions at the beginning at class, I ask everybody's opinions. I did this before, and it worked great. Whenever I was polling issues for my own presentation to Dr. Harrison, and I know that that does work well, because it starts a good conversation about issues at our school, and it gets more involvement with my peers. And I know that that would kinda be the focus of what I personally would do, was just start off each class, talking about it, to get everybody's perspective. And if you have online classes, that might be a bit harder, and I can recognize that. But I know, that's what I did, and it worked very well whenever I was polling all of my different issues together.
So what I, and colleagues, please weigh in. One of the things that I can speak to, and I know Board Member Garrett, and also Board Member Miller, these are some busy kids. They, students, they do a lot of things with their coursework. Some of them are working and things of that nature. And so for me, my, I wanna make sure that you all can meet, and that you all can come to a consensus. And we've talked about coming to a consensus, and we, I kinda shared how we, as a board, have to do that, to where you all can have that designated time to meet. But, it would be a concern to making sure that you all had a wide range of student voice, because that's what you all are representing. You're not representing your small collective circles, and many of us are in different type of groups and things of that nature. How do you branch outside? I would like to hear more, how do you plan to branch outside of your normal day-to-day student population that you tend to be around?
One big thing that I know I've had some of my teachers do is, they've posted it for some of their other classes. So I'm good friends with my biology teacher, and she teaches freshmen. So a good thing that she's done for me before is posted a link to one of my surveys, and then they'll fill it out with some of their issues. And then I can sift through that myself, and then find the big issues that we're seeing all over again. And I know that's one way that you can target it for just the freshman class. Or if she has sophomores or juniors, we can see that, as I'm just asking around in my senior classes.
Yes, I completely agree. I also think, President Sparks, your question speaks mostly to like accountability on our parts. Being able to go up to peers and ask those questions, and, you know, maybe talk to a teacher and have them post something on Schoology, or, you know, I think a lot of us have like Student Senate and clubs like that, so maybe going to a couple of club meetings, and you know, asking, asking around students like that. It's a great way to find like collective bodies of people to talk to.
I think I agree with that, just because I was in Tiger Broadcast for two years, and like, we do like date, weekly Tiger News, and like, we post like this video. I feel like we could, I could talk to like that teacher and ask her to address, like if you, like she can post the link, everyone has access to that video. We can do the link that way. And I also think that us interviewing each student is more efficient, just because I feel like they need to trust us, we're here on their behalf as well. So I feel like they need to learn to trust us, that we're gonna talk about and like, address the things that we need to address, besides just putting their opinion out there, and they don't know what we talk about here. If they're not here, they're not gonna trust us. So, I also feel like a Google Form with just us having it and going out would be so much better.
So I totally agree with that. I think something that we should do is maybe go to different classes, like ask teachers if we could take like five minutes of their time and kind of explain why we're doing it. Just to kind of, I feel like it's, when you ask a person to do a survey, like it's easier when they know the reason behind the survey. So I think it'd be easy if you just go in for five minutes, just explain it, and just ask them to do it.
Something that I, something that I was trying to bring up that kinda got lost was for scheduling for our rep meetings, I do feel like having one or two that are in-person, and then having the rest of them be Google Meets are important. Because like Mr. Sparks had said, there are a lot of us that kinda get busy throughout the week, so we don't always have that availability. But I know that having that online access makes it way easier, and having that in-person meeting still meets that need of being able to see each other face-to-face and discuss these issues. But having it every single week might be a little bit too much for some people. But I know that most people could get that online meeting if we have it later at night.
So, Dr. Buck, let me, can I ask this question? So with kinda hearing from what the students are saying, how can we accommodate them to be able to have that flexibility without it being a disruption for the students?
So that was gonna be my question for you guys. Do you wanna have it during the school day? Or do you wanna have it not during the school day? Do you think, if we had a meeting two weeks from now, for you to bring your data together and come up with themes that you wanna discuss with the board, would you wanna do that during the school day or after school? And we could even do a doodle poll to see if there's consensus that way.
Okay, sorry. I think it would be more beneficial if we do it during a school day, like you said. Not just to get out of school, but like, knowing me, I have three jobs, and I'm involved in like fifty thousand things. And so I think it'd be extremely hard for all of us to find at least a single day where however many, fifteen or whatever, can get together. But we're all in school during the day. So I think that'll be like the most beneficial way to get us all together.
And as you do that, as you guys kind of give your feedback on that, start the day here, in this building, or rotate buildings? You wanna have lunch here? You wanna do the in-building? I was gonna make a suggestion on location, because one of the things that we talked about as a board that we also wanna hear from, and this is one of the toughest parts of this job, is to not forget the kids that are in the middle school level, especially, right? Not that we wanna completely disregard elementary, but middle school is, as you all probably are aware, tough time, right? And part of this was to make sure that our reps can get into the middle schools to also understand what's going on in the middle school. Now whether that's asking a teacher during, like, for them to stay twenty minutes after in a high school day and jump in on a Zoom call into somebody's advisory who maybe they know in the middle school, to be able to talk to a class via a Google Meet and advisory, since middle school would still be going at that time, that's kind of an option. To meet as a group at one of the middle schools, right? Instead of coming here, or going to one of the high schools. Have your first meeting at, you know, Bernard Campbell, or something like that, where then you can kinda get in and talk to some of the middle school kids, too, all at the same time. So, I don't wanna still, I know it's a lot of work, and this is one of the reasons why this is such a work in progress, right? Because we're sitting here, we're talking about it, and there's so many unanswered questions, right? And there's so many things that I would love to suggest, we do this, this, and this. And we're not gonna get to it all, and that's okay. But it was, I think, shared by all seven of us, that the middle school is super important in this component as well, because quite honestly, they're gonna be taking their spots, right? And so, we want this to be sustainable. We want to hear what's going on in those buildings as well. And so I think the rotation of locations is a wonderful idea, but I'd start in the middle schools, with having all of them visit those middle schools. That's what I would do.
Board Member Murdock, I completely agree. I was about to ask a question of how, how do we communicate that we are student representatives, so that people can seek us out if, let's say, we don't ask a certain kid in the hallway, what's the worst thing, what's the best thing about the R-seven school district, right? Or the middle schools, we don't go to school with them. How do they contact us? How do they remember all of our emails, right? So I think being able to get in the middle schools and get around, or maybe we have another way that everyone can contact us would be a great idea.
And I'm, I'm still good, like, in contact with some of my middle school teachers, and I think that they would think that that's a great idea, if we could come into one of their classes sometime, talk to them, or even like, get a bunch of classes like in their library or something, and tell them like, hey, if we're student representatives, so if you have an issue you'd like to discuss or something, you can come talk to us.
And I'm gonna keep throwing things out there, sorry. This is one of the great aspects of our collaborative space now that we have at middle schools, right? So, we have pods where they could bring for advisories, even if it's for ten minutes, right? Ten minutes is, you know, you may not get more than that, right? I don't know, but an advisory class, that's kinda what it's for, right? We're trying to impact kids and be positive influences for kids and help them. So, that seems like a great time where you can get a lot of kids together. It would be a very good cross-section of the buildings, right? Because you're not going and just picking and choosing, it's just those classes would be able to come together. So, just, just something to think about as we, as we press forward this first month.
Go ahead, go ahead. While, while she's passing the mic down. One of the things that I want us as a board also, to be able to communicate to the student reps is transportation. You know, if there are barriers or things that you all come up against, it's important that you communicate that. The question is, is who do they communicate that to, right? And so that is something that we, as a board, kinda need to talk about, so that they can have a point of contact person to be able to communicate those concerns to. And that was one of the questions that did come up, and I did not have the answer, because that is a full board conversation.
And let's just acknowledge, by the way, that half of the reason of doing this is so that that kinda concern comes to us, and we can rectify those issues. I mean, we're kinda going full circle with it, right? The whole point is, is to eliminate that exact kinda barrier. So, I see people in the room who have impacts and oversight over things like that, that we might be able to alleviate that concern, even if they grimace at us when we say that, so...
So what does that look like in staff, or anyone can weigh in? What does that look like if one of our student reps have issue with transportation to get somewhere? What, how can we accommodate them?
It's as easy as establishing a shuttle from the school to whatever site that we would need to go. We would need, you know, plenty of advance notice, so we can work out the details of that. But we provide shuttles quite often.
We will, if it's okay with you, Ms. Linda, and we provide your contact information. We will um if it's okay with you, Ms. Linda, and we provide your contact information. Um and many of them have your email already, but we'll make sure that you all have the board secretary's information. And if there's um any type of communication that you all need um to um schedule um transportation or things of that nature, please communicate with Ms. Ismer and she will connect you to the proper to the appropriate person here at the district to be able to make sure that we overcome those barriers. Um do not be shy. Um this is what it's about. It's about communicating and being able to work through um different obstacles that may come up, okay?
If we did two hours at a middle school two weeks from now, what part of the is it easier to do at beginning of the day, end of the day, lunchtime? When when should we pick the two hour block that you can meet together at a middle school?
Most likely the morning, I think, but also retracting a little bit back to what Ellie was saying really quickly. I think that if we if someone wanted to contact us, I think that we should inform everyone to go to the counseling center where the counseling center could have our contact information and from there we'd go ahead. But I think that the morning times would be more beneficial.
And if you disagree, this is a this is a great conversation.
Um I feel like most of the IB and AP classes are actually in the morning and the afternoon. Um lunchtime would be probably the most accommodating for everyone, taking those kinds of classes, I believe.
Okay, I also personally think afternoon would work best for most people. And you know, me personally, it doesn't affect me much. Um I'm an STA and I'm placed at Campbell, so I'm there in the mornings anyways. But um I know um I cannot remember her name, but you you said you're off campus in the mornings, right? Yeah, so I think around like lunchtime maybe would be the best for everyone because that's around a time where most people are on campus and are able to be somewhere without missing an off-campus site. Like I know mine personally meets once a week. So if I was to miss something from that, that would be pretty detrimental because I have like once a week two-hour class, so.
What's nice about lunchtime, we could provide you lunch too for free. Dr. Shelton, I assume shuttles are easier at lunchtime for you?
Yeah, mid midday routes, you know, obviously we're we're very busy. You know, during the morning routes, we're very busy during the afternoon routes. There's that time in the middle of the day where we have more availability of drivers and buses and and shuttles. And I believe we were just talking to Ms. Sanders and we currently have some shuttles set up that are are currently running as well, so.
Would that create an immediate barrier for any of our student reps or alternates if we did midday? No? Okay.
Oh, so sorry. Um I I was gonna say I also agree, but I also do feel like we need to have at least a meeting with just student reps um and you guys or something like that before we go so we can kind of prepare. Um but kind of adding on to the whole lunchtime thing, I think lunchtime will work better because we did ROTC recruiting at the middle school. Um during their advisory, I think, in the afternoon. And it was very hard because again, schedules. Um and at that point, I think middle schoolers completely lose like every sense of sitting still and paying attention. And so I think it'll be very beneficial if we don't get them and as soon as they wake up. But I think once they get some food in them or something like that, they'll be more attentive to what we have to say.
I so I will I will work on getting a spot for that and and so we'll try to pick a date. There is a the Super Bowl two weeks from now, so there is a we don't know if they won. There may be a parade. We'd want to avoid that day and I don't know what day that is. So we'd probably try to shoot for Friday of that week. Um is what I think. Valentine's Day is Wednesday and I I
I may have heard it's then.
Well, that's what would it has been done in the past, but it wasn't Valentine's Day. So I I don't know. We want to be probably be safe and we might want to pick the sixteenth at Friday um as a date just to be safe because they have not announced it. Um so we can work on that piece and I think there's somebody wants to say something.
Yeah, I think doing like board meeting, sorry, board meetings like Friday since it's late start would be really easy for everyone.
Um I had a question. So would it look like like a couple of student reps go to each middle school? Or would you rather it be like all of us go to one middle school?
I love that question and I think that, I mean, my opinion would be that you you guys maybe tackle, you know, a group of you tackle each just so that you could get more surface area covered. And plus, just think about it. You're gonna be in front of middle schoolers who are probably gonna look at you all and be like, there's a whole bunch of them. This is terrifying versus, oh, there's just a couple and they're gonna talk to us and I don't know. That's my opinion, but I don't know whatever.
See, this is why we have to build consensus because yeah, I'm on the complete opposite end the first time. This first time through, just just the first meeting. Um and it's not because I don't want them to visit each middle school. It's because I want them to be together as a group to process the data together that they get from their buildings while then knocking out um an extra piece of input by being able, whatever middle school you were at, um to be able to talk with some students while you're at that particular middle school. Uh because I think the first time, since essentially we're relying on the building reps essentially to work together um within your own building to figure it out this first time, right? I mean, that's that's truly what this is. We're gonna give you open-ended questions and we're gonna send you out there and say, figure it out. We need we need answers, right? And then we'll come back and we'll figure out that that was a terrible idea, right? And then we'll we'll deal with it as we go. But I was just thinking, I'd like them together, right? At that very first um kind of post-collection of data meeting to talk through how it went. They can figure out um also what to do through the month of March, that kind of thing, as we task them with other items. Um but then also we could have them talk with some of the middle school students that very first month.
Can I ask a question?
No.
No. Can I get a buzzer? Um okay, so just so because I'm kind of unclear, so maybe they're a little bit unclear. The ask for the first board meeting is to focus on feedback from their buildings, right? Because I would be concerned if we're trying to have them bite off a little too much and then the what we're the information we're getting back is watered down because they're spread too thin. So I think maybe I'm hoping the focus is we focus on their school buildings that they're in. And then maybe the next board meeting is more of the World Cafe feedback from middle schools. Give them more time to get acclimated. Am I hearing that correctly?
I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay, go ahead and cut me off.
I want feedback from their buildings, but then I because they're getting feedback from their buildings on those three questions while they're at the middle school discussing it, I think ask that middle school those same three questions to get the idea of from some of those students.
Yeah, so to ask. I just feel like the so I guess my thought is when they're trying to kind of um put together and collect the feedback, a middle school experience is gonna be a little bit different feedback-wise than their school buildings. So I think it might dilute or confuse, this is the experience that's happening in the middle schools, so let's talk about that. And then separately, we talk about what's happening in the high school buildings, just so that there's, you know, that's
We're on the same page. We're we're on the same we're on the same page because I was actually thinking of it as they would be getting together to talk about what's going on within the high schools. And then they would also be able to tell the board, hey, we did, we're able to visit with some students at Bernard Campbell. And here we're a couple of like essentially make it a separate, a standalone kind of thing. That then we could go back and and get more in-depth. We yeah, we're pretty much on the same page there.
Re reclaiming my time.
Yeah.
I've been waiting to say that. All right, no, listen. Uh one uh so one
Been in DC too long.
So we so we uh uh so three difference of of opinions. Uh one said for them to separate. You said for them kind of go as a collective group. My response is gonna be for them to figure it out. That you all are juniors, you all are seniors. And you all are hearing what we want from you all. We want the information. Work together, build consensus, bring us back a presentation that you can present to the Board of Education. That's what my response to.
As long as we can find them space if they choose to split up, because that would be on them then to make sure that the administration finds them space.
The split up might be more of a challenge shuttle-wise. That's that's the only fear if they're all doing it same day.
But I agree. I'm all for figure it out. That's why we got you.
So this was one of the questions that we did talk about when we were um putting the policy together. And I believe that it was you, um Board Member Murdock, was saying that there probably needs to be some type of leadership from the group. And so um I I would say that that's probably like your guys' first task is to have conversations and they may be hard conversations, right? Of trying to figure out who's gonna be the communicator um for what are some needs, what are some wants? Um communicating with Ms. Ismer and then if there's things that she needs to communicate to board leadership or the full board, she can do so. And so while we go and we start talking about our legislative update, if you all have time um or start exchanging contact information with each other, but start having those conversations. And I think the first task for them would be to build that consensus of who is, you know, your top three leaders? Um who are your who are gonna be your leaders that'll work together to kind of coordinate your meeting schedule, to coordinate? Um that's where Ms. Ismer is not being inundated with, you know, sixteen people emailing her, asking questions. You kind of can go to your um your leader.
Do you all have a contact list for each one of you?
Maybe not.
Okay, so there's the first thing that we need to provide to them, right? Is contact for all of you as one group so that you can see everybody that's a part of the group and be able to contact them. That that'd probably be the one of the very first things we need to get to them, so.
Do you guys like that idea of you come up with leadership? And if you want, after you're done with this conversation, we can give you a conference room. You can try to come up with that piece as well.
How about Dr. Buck's office? Does that sound good?
That sounds awesome.
Edgar, my dear on the wall, would like to see you, yes.
Yeah, something that I was trying to jump in with like a while ago now. But um my main thing about having these meetings for Friday specifically is for online meetings would be preferred on Friday. I know specifically me, um I have divorced parents, so I would not be able to come here in Lee Summit on a Friday because I'd be having to go to a different city. And I know there's other people that have stuff to do on Friday nights. Um so I do feel like online, I would be A-OK with on Friday nights. In-person would be a little bit more tough. Um and then in regards to that, leading up to going to different middle schools, I know that shuttling could be an issue if we were to split up. Um if there was any way that we could do Monday as one middle school for one group, Tuesday as one middle school for another. Uh I do feel like that would be a good way to do it. And then at the end of the week, we can all come together and be that collective online. And I feel like that would be a good way to do it if there's no issues with shuttling week long.
I want to switch gears with another question real quick, but can we acknowledge?
Let me let me just respond to
Sure.
Have the conversation collectively. Y'all work it out. We're here to support what y'all need. Is that fair? Y'all have that conversation, work it out, and then whatever you all need from us as a board, we're committed to meet those needs.
Okay.
Go ahead and turn the page.
She's been patiently waiting with her hand raised, so I wanted to kind of call Addison on the end. So it's it's your turn, Addison, and then I'll ask my next question.
Thank you. It kind of goes in with that. So you guys basically answered my question. Um so also kind of a comment and another question added on to that. Um I really do agree with that whole, like you said earlier, um you're giving us the driver's seat. That's the first step to leadership is by putting us in and whether we fail, that's how we learn, but we're here in this together. So I really do think that is a great way to at least get us a foot in the door. Um but when is, could we possibly, if we did have like that kind of meeting conference to truly discuss days and all that? So we're not throwing everything at you. Um is there a possibility we could make those plans for meeting, like a meeting before the next two weeks and already go ahead um and ask for that day that we could do that today? Like, are we allowed to kind of give our information on that?
Whatever y'all need. If y'all go in that in that room, Dr. Buck's office, and y'all come up with whatever your plan of action is, Ms. Ismer will be here and she can be able to get that information. Um well, she'll be in our meeting. Um but Dr. Shelton or Ms. Sanders um can be able to get that information or or Ms. Bergen um to be able to get that information and then communicate to Dr. Buck or
I think what I'm hearing is that February twenty second is a board meeting and they would like to have a conversation with you. What you need to collect it, uh be prepared for that. Um that's up to you guys to decide and they're gonna be okay with it. That's what I think I'm hearing. So the I I and tomorrow morning, we'll definitely send the three questions to you and such. But if you want to meet in person once, twice, you want to meet at middle school, you want to, we're open. We'll try to support you in that, so. Um that I think that's what I'm hearing.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question?
I was just gonna say, we we're here to support you as well. So if there's if you need access to us for any reason, just know that you have access to us. All all of you have access to us.
Just add our emails to that email list. Make sure that they have all of us, so.
I was just going to ask, um I know East Trails kind of throws a wrench into all this, but traditionally uh Summit Lakes used to feed into West and Campbell and North. If we were to split up, would we be assigned to middle schools? Or would you want us overseeing all of them together as an entire entity?
So that actually came up in uh some of our discussion.
I think they should decide that themselves. Ooh.
Good, good response. That if I will say this, if you go back and look at our board meetings, you can see some of that discussion, but yes, you all decided yourself.
And when you decide, just remember now we have multiple middle schools that feed multiple high schools. So you have schools that feed three high schools, all three high schools. So just heads up, right? If you have that discussion.
Ms. Linda, is there a way that we could possibly also provide them with that list, but also provide them maybe a few uh the conversations that the full board had as we were developing this process? Um so that they can kind of see how this unfolded?
We would have the YouTube videos that we could give them a link to.
Can you provide provide that for them? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so we've kind of talked a little bit about the the formulation of finding your answers and and relating with your peers. Um but I kind of wanted to switch gears a little bit and just talk about what does the presentation to the board look like? Um because I think it's important for you guys to to discuss and figure out. Um are you gonna do a fancy PowerPoint or is it just gonna be a verbal conversation? Or what do you guys think would be most beneficial in that? Um and then I think for the board, that can help us decide, you know, how it fits into the agenda and the amount of time that we allot for it. Do you think it's something where you know, it's gonna be an extended period of time or pretty quick? Or what do you guys think that that might look like?
I think um I think that it would help if we did a PowerPoint at least um kind of all together because not only does that kind of help us if we forget a topic, you can look and use your notes. Um but I also think that would help you guys if you have any questions and we keep chatting and chatting and chatting. So you could go back and be like, hey, following back up on this, what what did you mean by this? So I think a PowerPoint would be more beneficial for not only us, but um all of our board members, just to kind of keep track of everything that's going on.
Honestly, at first I was gonna disagree and I was gonna say verbal conversations for the win. But um hearing all of that, I agree. I also think that um again, a PowerPoint is more of a two-person, one-person job. So I think that all of us should have some sort of notes or something that we could look at with our responses. Um but yeah, I think that a PowerPoint is good with also some information that we have either what we've printed out or what we've gathered in front of us.
To kind of respond to Elise's um confusion with like how the PowerPoint would run, I'm wondering if it would be beneficial that like um we could each present, not necessarily a whole slide, but we could take turns presenting slides. It's not one person or two people standing up presenting the whole presentation, but we can each present on a different issue that we might be more educated on.
I love all of those ideas. I think that sounds great and that you guys should figure it out in your next meeting.
Yeah, I and I was gonna say the same thing is that, you know, we're giving you the power to figure it out and what you think is best. And we want you to collectively figure out what that looks like. And so you you truly have the power to do what you want to do. And I think what Vice President Foley was saying is just like, just let us know what you need, what you come up with so that we can make sure to plan to have that time allotment or whatever technology that you're needing to present. So we'll just need to know those things. But outside of that, you get to decide how this looks.
I think that's a really cool thing about this opportunity is um you all get to write the the script. There's no wrong answers. So however you want to divvy it up, collecting data, presenting data, talking about it in your meetings, you know, just I would definitely, I love the idea of kind of electing or selecting a chair and a couple of vice chairs because I think someone is gonna have to take somewhat of a uh shepherding role in your conversations just to kind of keep everything on track, develop agendas and those sorts of things. So that's the only thing that I would strongly suggest is when when you are collecting in your meetings, trying to figure out who can just kind of lead the conversation just so that you can keep everything moving in um a uniform direction. But other than that, I think you all have so much power to just figure it out and um come to us with solutions. So it's a pretty cool opportunity.
I just want to add to that. Um as you are figuring out who's gonna kind of lead or shepherd, um just making sure that you're doing the same thing that we're asking you to do, which is make sh- make sure that everybody has a voice at the table. Um because just even in this setting, we see that some voices are louder than others and that's fine, right? Um but just making sure that everybody has opportunities to speak and and give their opinions. I think that's that's really important in this process as you move forward.
All right. Is there anything else? Anyone else would like to weigh in or have any questions for Vice President Foley?
Yes, I do have one. Uh so we've we've asked you quite a bit to collaborate and figure it out. Does anybody have any hesitations about that, that they would be willing to speak about? Go ahead.
Um um one of the things that I'm most hesitant about is being able to be Um, um, one of the things that I'm most hesitant about is being able to be heard because when it comes to picking out like a leader, I feel like sometimes if people know each other more well, it can be biased. And, um, I just feel like if we do do that on our own, I want it to be fair. And I want like everyone here to be able to be heard and like have a chance to lead something because I feel like all of us, um, are capable of doing it. But I don't know, I'm just kinda nervous about that.
I think that's a, um, uh, a very, um, bold thing and straightforward thing to say. Um, what, what we're gonna do is what we have to do even as adults at times. And that is, we're gonna trust each other, that they're gonna come in with the best intent. And so that's what I'm, um, charging as the board president, um, is that everyone come to this space with the best intent. If for whatever reason, um, someone feels like they're not being heard or things of that nature, we're here to support, right? Um, it, we truly are committed to not, to try to stay as out as much as we can. But we also understand that you all are still developing into becoming adults, right? And so we're here to be that support for you all. And so, um, do not hesitate, um, to, um, bring those concerns to us, um, collectively, individually, and for us to be able to figure out how we can support. And so my ask is when you all go and start having those conversations, make sure that everyone gets to weigh in. And then there's times that you all are gonna agree to disagree. And that's part of that consensus building that we talked about in that one-on-one. Um, there's times where we have votes, um, four-three, right, where we're just, we're split. But that does not mean that, um, Vice President Foley did not have good points, or that does not mean that she did not have the best intentions, um, with where she landed on her position. And so that's, we're gonna trust that you all are gonna have those conversations. That you all are gonna have those, those conversations and that you all will, will make the best decisions. And again, um, while I am the board president, my power is no stronger than any other of these members here. Um, they carry the same equal weight. They're duly elected officials. Um, and so, um, that is the same here. Just because you're the leader don't necessarily mean that you carry any additional weight. You're just the to-go-to person that's gonna help orchestrate meetings and things of that nature. And that's the role that I'm in, right? I get to help, um, along with Vice President Foley, to make sure that we're operating at a great, um, governance level. But we do not carry any additional power, um, than any of the other, um, board members. I cannot move unless they give me permission, and that would be the same with whoever you all select as your leaders.
Yeah, I wanna follow that up. There, when they vote, each vote is the same weight. There's seven votes. Um, so you all are leaders, uh, so please know that's what the expectation is. I think the bigger piece is, we don't want fifteen people emailing Ms. Ismer, and then maybe they're saying different things. If, we can have a spokesperson, if you will, um, so that way we know, um, you're, you're the person collaborating to get the consensus of the group and communicating it out, um, would be the nice piece there. So that way we know we're supporting you in the way the group came to consensus in.
Um, one hesitant thing, a hesitance that I have is essentially, so this meeting was us just getting introduced. And so after this, we're gonna go to each of our respective schools and we're gonna, we're gonna collect data. And then after that, the data that we've collected is what we're gonna implement like actions on, is what we're gonna try to essentially fix.
So that's, that's a good question. I'm gonna actually yield and let, um.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, uh, that's, it's interesting that you brought that up because one of the things that I was just gonna close with as a closing comment for all of you is to understand that the feedback, especially this first time through on some of the things that are going on, do inform how we look at policies within the district and going, that trickle down into your buildings, right? So while you may not see a speci, a specific action on a specific item, right? If there are trends and/or lots of thing, commonalities that you're finding within your buildings that need to be addressed, that's when tho, that information comes to us, and then we tell the guy sitting right there, 'cause he's our employee, we tell him, we want change, right, and you need to make it happen. And that's when policies and procedures then change, right? And so the information that you're able to gain, and then especially as we go forward in the months after that, where we can probably get more specific on things, um, is how you can make that kind of policy and district-wide kind of impact, right? Um, that's how, that's, that's the way we would probably interpret most of this information that you're gonna give us, especially this first time through.
I would just, I would follow up on that, and I would say, when you guys come to us, um, with your presentation or however you're gonna present it, you don't have to have solutions. You, you can come and say, hey, we see this is, issue, we see this issue, and not have a solution, and that's okay. You don't have to solve it. Just us hearing that helps us, like he said, look at how we're, you know, formulating and implementing new policies and things like that. So you don't have to specifically make a recommendation if you don't want to. But if you do, if you have an idea of a policy change or something like that, you can always bring that as well. So you can, you can do either way, but it's not required that you have to have already solved the problem.
Something that kinda got brought up in the one-on-ones is that as student reps, we would have the opportunity to present issues that are not already on the agenda to then add to the agenda. I was wondering, how would we go about with that process if we were to do that?
By, um, what, and then policy, um, there is, um, a consensus that has to be built, a majority. Um, and it's actually a supermajority, isn't it, the way the policy is written? Well, look at, read the policy that you all have already read, right? 'Cause y'all checked that box that said y'all read the policy. Uh, read, read the policy, uh, and it says what the percentage of the majority needs to be. And that is how you all get to then place an item on our agenda that we're gonna give you all the space to be able to present to the Board of Education. There you go.
Um, so kinda circling back to the whole information kinda spot, which, um, President Sparks, you've been outstanding on your like communication levels so far. I really appreciate that. But, um, this kinda folds into a question, but I think as our student leaders, we should all make, or whoever should make an agenda on what needs to be done, so that way we're not getting cross-communication. Um, but is there a possibility that either one of you or multiple or whoever could kind of make a checklist so we're not missing anything on what needs to be done, what we discussed, and kind of what our overall role is?
Absolutely.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's the simple answer.
Yes, yes, absolutely. What we'll do is, um, um, me and Vice President Foley will come up with something. We'll share with the full board, and we'll get it to Ms. Ismer to make sure that everyone gets it. Does that sound good? Okay.
Do you guys have time to stay a little longer and try to? I've tried to write down all the possibilities you could have for your first meeting on one sheet so that way you have a, a reminder of what we talked about, so you can come to consensus tonight about when and how you wanna meet and, and how you wanna go about things. That way tomorrow, one of you can use Ms. Ismer, the team of us, there's a lot of us here. We're here to support you because you're our primary stakeholders. We're all here, whether they're behind you, in front of you, beside you, we're all here to serve you. You're our primary stakeholders, so, um, you know, we, you know, that's not just you as a rep, that's you as a student, period.
Yeah.
So we'd be happy to help you out, but do you have time to go visit in a conference room right now? Okay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna gain a consensus on if we wanted to decide anything with the leadership or next meeting right now, or if we would wanna have like our contacts sent out, and then we can do that on our own.
Well, since you're all here, knock it out, man.
Can we get space for them, and we'll go ahead and go to our next item?
Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have an ask for board leadership regarding the twenty-second. I would really recommend, because I think that this first time through, when they are presenting to us and/or we want to have a discussion, let's make sure we have enough time. We're a wordy bunch typi, typically, so, um, let's allow as much time as necessary. I don't know what that looks like from a scheduling standpoint. I'll let you guys figure that out. But I would really, really encourage us to make sure that we have a nice block of time for them.
What I'll do, um, to Vice President Foley's earlier point is, once they prepare their presentation, for us to probably get a, a view of their presentation so we can gauge with, and we'll, um, kinda give them direction to kinda give us a timeframe of what it took for them to, to present their presentation. And then, um, we'll just make sure that it's, um, that they're allotted enough time. Correct. One, yes, absolutely. One of the. Yeah, turn your mic on.
And I think it might be helpful, um, to ha, allow them, if they choose, to maybe present to board leadership first so that they get a run-through first in front of, I don't know, I'm just putting that out there if that's something.
If that's something that they wanna do, I'm open to doing it. Um, ultimately, I really, I wanna be as hands-off as possible.
Yeah.
And that's where they don't, um, start feeling like they're being micromanaged or, you see them? And so, but to your point, if that is a request, absolutely, absolutely.
Cause they might not know if that's, I don't know.
Absolutely. If that's a request of theirs, I most definitely not believe, um, Vice President Foley will make ourselves available, or any board member, right, as long as we don't have more than four, make ourselves available, um, to them. And so to, um, um, Board Member Eslick's point, they'll have our information, and then they'll reach out. Um, but ultimately, I'm hoping that they'll direct that communication to Ms. Ismer um, so that, um, I don't, so no one feels like I'm receiving special time. Your mic.
If, if one of the representatives reaches out to us via email just individually, how, how do you want us to han, how should we handle that? Should we then?
I would say that you need to forward that to board leadership so that we can get with Ms. Ismer to, to address whatever that concern or need is. Does anyone have a problem with that? No? Okay. Um, go ahead.
So I just wanted to throw one thing out there that I was thinking about. As, uh, as we're going through this process, the first time we meet with them, if their present takes, presentation takes thirty minutes, I think that's, I mean, that's fine. I think we, we told them, you can do what you can do, and, and we didn't give them a restriction. But I wonder if maybe going forward after that, we set them a certain amount of time, and we can kind of evaluate it based on how that first one goes. But I think, uh, if I was in their shoes as a student, I think it would be beneficial to know, like, I've got a ten-minute time slot or whatever that is going forward for future meetings, just so that we don't leave it open-ended. And I would wonder, when is the appropriate time to have that conversation about a, a specific time limit after we see the first presentation?
I, I, I think the appropriate time would be, um, after they tackle this first task. So I think once this first task is complete and they present to us, that's also gonna give us a, a way to gauge, right? Um, and if there's some things, um, some constructive, um, feedback or room of opportunities of growth that we can provide to them, um, as feedback from the first presentation. And so if time is one of them, we get to address time. If it's your presentation, we get to address that, right? Whatever may be, that's us helping to, um, grow them in their leadership. Um, and so I agree with you, and I know that that was one of, that was some of our conversation even while we were developing this, right? Was to not just let them come in here and just stand in front of us for a whole hour. Um, but to, um, provide for them, you know, when you go to a business meeting, you don't get to just sit standing in front of the CEO, um, all day. You have to be very specific, direct, um, and be prepared to be able to get in and get out.
Yeah, and I, and Board Member Miller and I talked about that even when we were working on the policy is, is that we're gonna understand probably after this very first time, some guardrails that we want as a part of the overall process that we want them to follow, especially even on how we assign them tasks too, right? What's the most meaningful task, giving us the most meaningful feedback and getting the most meaningful action? You know, we're, we're gonna want all three of those things, and so we had discussed, yeah, we're, we'll want to, this is a great trial, right? It's this first meeting. I'm not meaning in order, I want the thing to be sustained, right? Um, but this first one's gonna be a great trial.
I wanna keep us on, on track on time, but I'm not, yeah, no, I'm normally not, I don't try to rush our meetings. Um, but I wanted that to play out like it did, and so I did not rush it. But I just wanna just put this in everyone's mind. Um, one of the, and that's why I was hoping, that's why I had everything compiled. But one of the concerns that kinda came up, I believe, twice, um, from a couple of the reps was, we just went through this process and I only get four months, and then I have to do this all over again. And so I just wanna put that out there, um, to kinda really think about that um, because that was a concern, um, that two of them did bring up, um, of, of having such a short timeframe of being able to participate and then possibly not being able to, um, um, participate again because they've already done it. So just wanted to put that out there for us to cons, um, consider moving forward. If there's nothing else, um, that we have to just get off our chests for this topic, if we can move on to the next item. Yes, Dr. Buck?
So the February twenty-second meeting, we already have two things in work session, CFMP update and mid-year budget. Are you wanting this in work session, or you want this regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
And, okay.
So was the time limit thirty minutes total for the item, like?
There's no time limit for them this first time.
Okay. Where are they gonna present? Is it gonna be towards the end or the beginning or?
I, I would, I would think right after presentations.
That's what I think too. Right after school board, school building, recognition of schools and stuff like that. That's where I would put them.
Do you all not like that?
No, it's, I'm just thinking length of meeting and, you know, it does.
The agenda's pretty short.
Okay. I'm not saying that I don't want feedback. I'm just trying to be considerate of everyone's time so that we can still have meaningful dialogue, not feel rushed, but also not have like a three-hour meeting or something. Cause I know the conversation could go on for a while, so that's, that was my only throwing that out there.
I will, I will say I've been clocking our meetings, and last meeting was like an hour and eight minutes, and so.
Yeah, but closed session was like five hours, so.
We definitely have been streamlined, so I think probably.
No, that's true, that's true.
So, but, but again, if, 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 uh, if, if someone thinks it's excessive, then voice, voice it, right?
Well, let's just see how the first one goes.
Absolutely.
I don't think it would, I don't think it should be an hour every time, but if this first one goes that long, it goes that long. But yeah, knowing that it's the first one, as long as that expectation is made clear to the students so that they don't think that that's gonna be the norm going forward, I think that's fair.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and move on. Dr. Buck, do you got everything you need? All righty, um, let's move to our next item, um, two point zero two, World Cafe Event, um, Reflections. Um, you'll see in your package, um, both of the, um, illustrations, um, graphic illustrations that was, um, provided, um, for both events. Um, one of the things that, um, which even came out here, right? What do we do? We get the information, um, um, we have it, uh, we've been able to have some time to stew on it. Um, how do we move forward? Um, do we just continue doing these and, and just having it as a pretty checkbox? Or do we actually do something with the information that's being provided to us as a board? And so at this time, I'm just gonna open it up. Um, is that you, Dr. Buck, that you wanna talk? Okay. Um, um, and so if, um, I'm just gonna open it up, no, you're fine. I'm opening it up to the full board, let's, and let's have this dialogue.
Well, I'll start. I have three points for it, knowing that we were gonna talk about it. The first is, is that continuity of these kinds of events becomes important, right? So now that they've begun, they need to continue, okay? So start with that. Um, but put them more on a little bit of, of a schedule. So let's say, you know, we know the community would like to do them. We know summer's not really an option because people typically aren't gonna show up to things like that anyway in the summer, so put them once a quarter, right? We did one in October, we did one in December, do one in February, do one in April. You know, something, something along those lines, right, where you can continue to reflect throughout the school year. The second thing that I would say about them is many of the things that we have seen mentioned are things the district is actually tackling and working on, right? Um, for better, to try to make some of those things, especially the things that people, cause typically people will have more things to say about the things they're unhappy about, right? And so, um, many of the things that people were unhappy about or would like to see some changes, we are making strides in, and we are trying to do. Um, and so I think that when we see some of those, um, common themes, um, throughout one of these World Cafe events, we need to make sure then and get the messaging out as soon as possible about what we actually are doing, right? Follow it up, be quick about it to say, actually, here was one of the, the most common themes we heard. Here is what LSR seven is doing, um, in regards to that particular item. I think that that becomes really important. And then the third thing, um, and the other thing that I thought about is looking at the two sheets and recognizing I was only able to be at the one in the fall, um, which was not as well-attended, but still had really good conversation. You still see things that are not exactly accurate of what's going on in the district. That's probably the best way to put it, right? Things that aren't actually accurate. And so having those kinds of conversations in the next World Cafe, I think is important, right? We heard this in the last meeting, here's some things that probably weren't quite accurate about that. You can actually kick the meeting off with, here's what we were doing since the last meeting. Here's some things we heard, but just to make sure everybody understands this is what's actually going on, and then you move into your next questions, whatever those would be. So those are kinda my three just general thoughts on the, um, continuum. Let's get information out about the district when we see these common themes, and let's correct misinformation when we see it. Um, I think that that's really, really important.
I appreciate those comments. Anyone else like way? Uh, Board Member Garrett?
Um.
And then we'll do Dr. Johnson.
And maybe this is something that's already happening or in the works. I just, is this public? Like, is it posted on the LSR seven website this, so that people are, they're able to follow up with, if they weren't there? They can see what we, what's been discussed, and then also with the follow-up?
Yeah, not, not only, not only is it public on the website, um, they can also see it in board docs, but then also, um, um, Ms. Bergen and her team, immediately once they're followed, it's getting email blasting, Lee Summit News. And so, um, everyone's receiving these, um, even if they did not attend. Anything else? Board Member Garrett?
No, thanks.
No, thanks.
Okay, all right. Dr. Johnson?
Wait, okay, yeah, I have a few things. One, Ri- Ryan already kind of answered this question, but in terms of having these, for the sake of checking the box and having these and actually doing something meaningful, I'm not at all in favor of checking boxes. So if that becomes the case, it would be an event I wouldn't attend. I'll be honest, I'm not checking boxes. Two, I think we'd be remiss to not consider the two World Cafes that Dr. Shelley hosted prior to the two we had as a board. There was themes very similar, I went to all four, there were themes, themes very similar. So I think we need to consider those two because it was some of the same players in our community. And again, I think we need to give credit to the fact that that's where it started with those two World Cafes. The other thing in terms of, um, how often, I know Ryan said quarterly, I was thinking fall, fall and, you know, the school year, fall and then like the springtime, whichever we call that. Only because if we are going to take action, we do need some time in between to collect the data, get action. And I think it is absolutely imperative that we correct misinformation as soon as possible and not necessarily wait until the next World Cafe. Because some of those people still may not participate or also not having people come back to another World Cafe with the same misinformation. So those would be my thoughts on continuing to do those things.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to weigh in on this discussion?
I will. Um, I, I agree with all of that, especially the scheduling piece. I think two, fall and spring would be great and keeping that kind of a regular rhythm event that people can expect, um, and to give us time to address issues. The other thing I would say is with some of these, and I don't have the previous World Cafe sheets in front of me, but I think that's also a great idea to bring those in. But just from the two, I mean, I guess I kind of look at some of these concerns that are brought up and think that immediately we could tackle some of the low-hanging fruit, I guess, and talk about some of the ways that those can be addressed. Um, and then some of the larger, uh, recurring themes may take some more, um, discussion and conversation around how to address those. But like, when I say low-hanging fruit, multiple times, for example, use of phones is mentioned. Okay, well, let's have a conversation about, well, really feedback from admin on, well, what can we do to address that and what are types of solutions? Not right now, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, another one, the lack of class, class credit for, uh, students in middle school who take classes. We've, we've talked about this one before. Um, but I don't think in a board meeting, I think it's probably been as a result of some of these conversations we've seen, um, from World Cafes. Um, but having that conversation around students who take these classes in middle school, but they don't get the high school credit for them. And I don't, I don't have a middle schooler, so I don't remember which specific, specific classes those are. But how can we address that? Reading programs are consistently brought up as an additional resource. So all of these things that are either themes or low-hanging fruit that we can try to address quickly, I think those are the things we need to prioritize. And then just like, uh, Ryan was saying, um, put that feedback back, back out into the community to say, these are the ways we're addressing this, like one that's on here. Um, communication between the board and the students. Well, this is a great opportunity to say, this came out of our World Cafe and this is how the board reacted to that and this is the policy that came out of that. So just circling back on concerns that were brought up and then the fact that the board is listening and taking that feedback and doing something with it. So, um, lots of elements, but closing the loop being one. Um, and specific maybe to the people who attended those events. Um, I don't know if we collected emails or anything like that, but I mean, that would be in the future, maybe something to do. When attendees come collecting contact information to be able to circle back with them specifically, so they know, you know, you, you've spent the time to come here and give us feedback. We want you specifically to know, this is what we've done, thank you for attending, please come again. So, yeah.
Go ahead.
So I would ask, because this is the first time we're having this discussion and it's much after we've had these two events. So when we have these, these discussions about even say the phone, phone policy, right? We have to have those in a public manner. So are we going to now set public meetings that are immediately following, uh, these events so that we can have that discussion and have the follow-up plan? Because otherwise, how, how are these things going to be addressed? That's, that's kind of how I would kind of throw the question out there because there's, there's topics that I know, you know, one, for example, was the dress code. So when people brought that up at my table, we talked about it at the table and I talked about the legal aspects and you know what I've learned from MSBA. Uh, but there were other people that didn't get to hear that response and we don't usually have a time to collaborate right after to come up with that plan that then gets pushed out.
So, um, one of the things I think would be important for us to, um, remind ourselves as a board is, it's not our job to come up with the solutions to these problems that come up. And so what I would want to make sure that we're doing as a board is that we're giving direction to staff and superintendent, because that's the only person we actually can, um, um, give, um, direction to. Is that when we have these, that we're not doing these just because. We're doing them because we're trying to gather information and feedback from all of our stakeholders. And then the expectation for, to our superintendent is, is to examine them with his team and then to be able to bring back to us action items on how they're dealing with them. Um, and so that, so I don't know if it's necessarily for us to have discussion to come up with solutions or a conversation. I think when it comes to, um, false information, um, I do think that, um, um, Dr. Buck, he can instruct, um, um, Ms. Bergen, um, to, um, address from a PR standpoint, the things that's false information. Just as they, um, try to do when it comes to public converse, um, public comments, um, during our board meetings. Um, and so, um, I, I, I want, I just wanted to weigh in and remind us of that because I don't want us to get too, um, deep down into these issues. Not that we're ignoring them, because, um, if we're ignoring them, then to Dr. Johnson's point, then that's just us just saying, we're doing it just to do it, right? Um, but, but it is our job to make sure that we're hearing the voice and that Dr. Buck knows that we're expecting for things that can be addressed, to be addressed, um, from his leadership.
Okay, let's, I want to give a little bit of a pushback though. Okay, so one of the things that I heard at one of my tables had to do with volunteering. And, uh, it was believed that in the elementary schools, there's a lot of opportunities for volunteering, but when people have older kids, they didn't know how to get involved. When they have high school students and one parent said, oh, you know, my, my kiddo wouldn't want me, uh, in their school, they would be so embarrassed. But there was another parent that said they would like to get involved. And the question was, how do we get the word out about that? So even though it's not reflected on this poster, I would have liked to have had that opportunity to share that, so that is something that could get follow-up when he does do the follow-up. So just having a moment for us to have conversation, I think is beneficial for those key little things that maybe didn't get reflective on the poster, but think that we should address.
Well, the, um, so number one, I want to give you an opportunity, Dr. Buck, to, to share with the board. How would you respond to, to things that are said through these meetings? But before, um, Dr. Buck answered, I know with both of these events, and I can speak for, um, one prior to the board taking action and doing this. But before we leave the room, we, we're able to stand in front of the screen and get a consensus of if what you said, if everything that was captured in that time, is it captured in this? Um, so to me, I think would be very, um, unfair for someone to say that a concern or something they brought up was not illustrated in the drawing because that space is there. For, um, would, would anybody disagree that that space was created for any constituent to be able to say, what I said or what I brought up, um, is not displayed on the drawing?
I would disagree just a little.
Okay.
Only, only from the standpoint that we typically have people there that when we're up at the end of the meeting, it's a consensus building activity at that point. So I think people are more looking at the sheet to identify the themes that were, um, appropriate for the night. And if they had an individual point that was just theirs and theirs alone, it's not going to be reflective, um, on, on this particular sheet. And I do think to Vice President Foley's point, um, you know, that kind of question about volunteering and stuff like that, uh, would be an appropriate thing as a reflection point on some of these items. And if, if the board came to the idea that we just want to do the two meetings, uh, per year, right? That, which I think I absolutely agree with you guys' rationale on why that would be appropriate. It would stand to reason then that in the follow-up board meeting, allot that 10 minutes for just exactly what the title of this one is. Reflect on the community, uh, World Cafe event, um, identify some of those themes, talk through anything that you need to. Add a work session or regular meeting, either way would be fine, but that reflection piece right after it happens, um, I think would be really appropriate.
So, and I'll say this, and then Dr. Buck, I'm sorry. Um, so what about, while World Cafe model is one model, do we, can we not introduce another model to go along with the World Cafe model? To where we're not just, um, engaging with our constituents, um, twice a year?
Yes, and by the way, after you guys had the one in December, just so you know, I had multiple people call me and ask, um, was there an opportunity in the spring for a Q and A model? Um, where a couple of board members would attend, not the whole board, but would be essentially farmed out, a couple of board members go together to a school or, or an event, um, that kind of thing that community members could attend. And it quite literally would be a Q and A. This is my question, what do the board members think about it? Um, now, we've had discussions about that in the past and there's pitfalls to that. And, and people would need to understand that board members would have to be on the same page, um, about, um, what we can answer and what you can't answer, right? Cause there'd be some things that you probably get asked that you can't answer. Um, and so you need to be on the same page there, but I had that question asked multiple times, right? That about formatting of these particular things. So I think there are other things that the board is going to want to explore to continue to get the feedback. This is a great one though, right? And then you just build on it, keep, keep looking into different alternatives.
Dr. Buck and then let's go with Board Member Eslick. Yes.
And then we'll have to, we want to wrap it in respect of their time.
So in the summer of 2022, we went to MSBA's Summer Institute in St. Charles. And Todd Whitaker gave a, a concept, I think it's really, uh, a wise way of looking at this. You are, you are a filter, you decide what is important for the board and what's important for me, what's important for other, or which is nice to know. So for example, one on here says less board turnover. I don't think we need a work session, less board turnover, you just see all need to sign up and run again, Ryan. All right, so it, it, you know, that, that'd be great to have less board turnover, but I don't think that's a governance thing, right? It's just something you hear. But if you wanted to have a conversation about, um, cell phone policy, well, your board policy is your board policy, right? So you could have, you could decide, hey, we want to have a work session on, or you could say, now you got a new vehicle, students, what do you think of our current phone policy? You can filter and decide the direction, but I think it's just something you'll have to, you have to digest, because not everything is going to be talked about there, is going to be, um, a board work session topic or a topic you want to throw to them. Um, so I think that's what you have to decide, every, after everyone, ha- have a space, you can be a filter and say, do we want to have further conversations or learnings or wrestle with something after this? That, that would be my encouragement.
I'd agree. Is there any other discussion on this item?
I'll just echo, because that was all I was really going to say, is that just having a work session after, that just a, it's a set agenda that we're going to do after, um, the World Cafe, just to review and be able to pluck out those things that we do want to focus on or ask our, uh, an admin to focus on, dig into, whatever. But just have that opportunity to close the loop. So that's all I was going to say.
Absolutely, I think that was a good, I think that's a good point. What I will tell you is, is, um, board leadership had already scheduled out with Dr. Buck our work sessions. And, and then there were times where additional things were coming. And so, um, this was important for me and Vice President Foley, um, we just was trying to get it in there, but hearing, um, the feedback, I understand that it's important that we're having them, but then also making sure that we're having a follow-up meeting, um, to be able to go over, um, the work session. Vice President Foley?
Real quick, I just want to ask, we've got two that we've done now, what is the feedback going to look like from these two? Is that a task that we're giving now for a follow-up on that and any of the information that's from here? Kind of, we kind of talked about going forward, what it'll look like for future events, but what about the two that are already done? How are we going to address the concerns that are in these documents?
My, my thoughts would be that, um, these, if they have not already been examined, um, but they would be examined. And if there's things that, um, Dr. Buck can, um, task himself or his team to address, that that's what's happening. And that if the ask is from the board is for us to get follow-up, then for us to basically get a follow-up, um, in a formal way, so that we can be able to see what things are being tackled or addressed from these two. Do the board have any objections to that? Okay, um, what we're going to do, um, we had a legislative update, um, I know that there probably are some questions and things of that nature. If we can just, we're not going to be able to tackle this because we know we have our seven o'clock closed session. But if you can, um, just review this, if there are questions, get them to Dr. Buck, um, actually, sorry, get them to Ms. Linda in board leadership, so that we can also make sure that the responses and things, everyone is getting those, um, responses to any of those concerns. And so at this time, our work session is going to be adjourned. Thank you.